All right, very good.
Yeah.
I know. So, we're gonna start the meeting. I usually have a gavel, so I'm just gonna... Okay, so now we've started the meeting. We are so glad to be in North Bend, Ohio for our meeting. As you all know, those of you that follow the work of the Commission, once a month, we go out into the community. There are 49 jurisdictions in Hamilton County, and so we choose one of the jurisdictions, and we go to that jurisdiction for our evening meeting to be more accessible, but also to engage and create relationships. And so we are just delighted to be here in North Bend. We're kind of on the far reaches to the west of the county. And I know it's the first time for some folks to be out to North Bend, but we're so glad that you are welcoming us into your chambers, and thank you for allowing us to conduct our meeting. So, we will start with some introductions. So, Leslie Hervey is the Assistant to the Clerk of the Board. To my right is Commissioner Victoria Parks. To my left is the Vice President of the Commission, Stephanie Summerau-Dumas. Next to her is Jeff Aluto, the County Administrator, and Legal Counsel Michael Friedman is to his left. We will start the meeting with silent prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance. So, please stand if you can. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Second.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summerau-Dumas?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. We are gonna start with a short presentation from the Vice Mayor, Ron Hartwein, who is here this evening. I understand that the mayor is out of town. And so he's gonna introduce some of the other council members that are in attendance. And again, thank you for having us. Thank you all for coming out to the meeting. And we're gonna brag a little bit about North Bend.
Well, we appreciate you having us here. My name's Ron Hartwein, and Denise Dreehouse said the mayor is unable to attend. He's traveling on business. And I'd like to introduce the other council people, persons that are here. We have Dave Mormon, Shirley Smith, and Fran Romweber. Doug asked me, and he kinda gave me a little script, so I'm gonna give a little information about the village. The village was established in 1789 by John Cleve Sims, the same year as George Washington took the oath of office. Being founded a person who has given the authority over the Northwest Territory after the American Revolutionary War is quite a statement. The gentleman also became father-in-law of our ninth President of the United States, William Henry Harrison, whose memorial is in the village. And if anybody... When you leave tonight, you'll see a bright light on the other side of US 50, and that's where the memorial is. And it's a very nice memorial, which we have every... His birthday is February 7th. And Denise Dreehouse came to the celebration, which they walk from here to the tomb, and have a general from the United States Army give a speech and do a nice presentation. So, we are very proud. The Village of North Bend has had two Presidents from the village, which is pretty unusual for a very small village. The village has about 1,000 citizens. And we've expanded 2,000 when Ashton Oaks was developed back, I guess about 25 years ago. And that added additional 500 residents. And if anybody's interested, Ashton Oaks was named after John Ashton Warder. And he still remains in Ashton Oaks. His home still remains in Ashton Oaks. And he was a founder of the U.S. Forestry Service. And in the city of Cincinnati, named Warden Nursery, located in Finney Town, is in Springfield Township. If you look around, and anybody who was here before, we redeveloped this entire area, the building here. We put a Presidential Park out here, which is off to the side. We put some exercise equipment here that came from We Thrive, from some grants from We Thrive. And we use that money. We put some exercise equipment and put a nice park for the local citizens. And during the summer, it's used quite a bit. We... If anybody came through here during the winter, we have... We're very proud of our Beautification Committee, which Fran Romweber, she headed that. And we have a lot of nice lights. And if anybody's seen it, we've got a lot of compliments. We get people call the village all the time about how nice the village looks. And if you head out to the, I guess, the west of here, we put a point where we put some flags, you know, and recognizing people, you know, it's lit up at night, which if you head out that way, it's very... A nice presentation for the village. So, with that, that's all I have.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
And I know we've had a good partnership, and we were just talking about this, with the Village of North Bend in Hamilton County. And so, we are happy to, you know, do what we can to partner with you to make things, you know, spectacular out here. I know folks that live in Ashton Oaks, and they just love it. So, again, thank you for having us. You've been very welcoming. My staff, I know, has been calling a lot about the meeting and getting things set up. So, thanks so much for being so gracious. I will say about the parade, it's always in February. And so, it's always cold. And so, we've been out there in the snow and the rain. And I used to be the state representative for this area, which is why I have such a long history with North Bend. But I would recommend it to others. Do wear a hat and gloves. And this year, I was telling Ron, I skipped the parade and went straight to the lunch. And that was not a bad decision, on my part, because it was a cold day. So anyways, thank you so much. And it's just a great historical place here in North Bend. So, we're gonna move then through the agenda. So, we have a number of speakers' cards. A couple of them are on an item that is not on the agenda. And so, we will call those folks forward first. So, Michelle Krensky is here. Please come forward. You've got the pleasure of the floor for two minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Krensky. I live in Cleves. I'm a member of Southwest Ohio for Responsible Technology, or SWORT, S-W-O-R-T. I'm here tonight to voice my concerns about the deployment of 5G in our city and our surrounding communities. 5G, the next generation of wireless technology, poses unique risks to our community, ranging from scientifically documented human health and environmental problems to property devaluation. While many legislators are under the impression that there's no legal recourse to push back against the unfettered rollout of 5G, I am submitting a sample of 5G legislative code from Americans for Responsible Technology, showing evidence that there is, in fact, many ways to effectively delay, or in some cases, stop 5G antennas from being installed near homes, daycare centers, schools, and other sensitive areas. Thousands of peer-reviewed studies of wireless radiation have shown DNA damage, increased cancer risk, heart arrhythmias, infertility, and cognitive impairment. The Academy... American Academy of Pediatrics and other health experts have warned that exposure is even more harmful to children. Recently, the Natural Resources Defense Council brought a lawsuit against the FCC for trying to eliminate environmental review requirements for small cell wireless facilities. The NRDC won this lawsuit, and companies must comply. And I'll be submitting a review of that case. As a registered nurse, I believe that informed consent is of utmost importance. The public has not been made aware of the potential dangers of this technology, and absolutely no studies have been done to show that it is safe to us or our environment. With that being said, I respectfully urge you to review and adopt the Model Wireless Telecommunications Ordinance for setting a small cell telecommunications infrastructure in public rights away to impede restrictions on small cell deployment in our area. Just real quick. If you could please visit our Facebook site, Southwest Ohio for Responsible Technology, or SWORT, and go to change.org to sign a petition to stop the deployment of 5G in Ohio until independent studies can prove that it is safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Could I submit these? Yes, please. We'll make sure all the offices get a copy. And on the same topic is Philip Krensky. Good evening.
Hi. My name is Philip Krensky, and I live in Cleves. I have this booklet that I'd like to submit to you afterwards as well. It's called Wireless Radiation: An Undeniable Risk to Human Health. And I'll be reading a short section from it. The notion that exposure to radiofrequency microwave radiation is not harmful to humans, which has been the underlying principle of all federal legislation and regulations regarding wireless technologies for more than 20 years, has now been proven false. The substantial body of credible science documenting harm from exposure to various levels and frequencies of wireless radiation demand a precautionary approach to the widespread deployment of wireless technologies to reduce potential harm to the public and to the environment. More than 240 scientists with published peer-reviewed research on wireless radiation and human health signed an appeal to the World Health Organization and the United Nations, calling for precautionary health warnings and stronger regulation of wireless radiation. The rollout of 5G technology will require the deployment of up to 1 million new small cell antennas in neighborhoods across the country, exposing millions of Americans to higher levels of wireless radiation 24 hours a day at close proximity. History teaches us that we ignore science at our peril. The science linking wireless radiation to adverse health outcomes is strong and growing stronger every day. Those with a financial stake in wireless communications may choose to disregard the science. Those with the responsibility to protect public health and safety must act with caution, recognizing that wireless radiation is an undeniable risk to our health and the environment. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll make sure everybody gets a copy of that as well. Thank you. I have no other speakers' cards related to an item that's not on the agenda. And so, we'll move to comments and motions of the Commissioners. Commissioner Summerau-Dumas?
Thank you, Madam President. Just a few comments. I would just like to give a small snippet of what we've done in the last week and a half within our team. And we went to the Government Strategies Conference last week. And the panel was about the Metro tax issue that's coming up for expanded transportation issue number seven. And we have taken a stand, and it's a nonpartisan stand by council and Commissioners, that this is an urgent matter, that we need additional transportation so more people can get to jobs, just access to the services that are needed. And it would expand not only the access, but also the number of buses. And in addition, the infrastructure, the bridges, can be included in this tax levy. And so, we're hoping that people will vote for that issue seven. In addition, we have an interim Job and Family Services Director. He is now permanent, but I had wanted to meet with him and see what his goals and vision is for JFS. Because as we make a transition, our current... Well, our past... She's still here until the end of March. She's been here for many, many years. And so, I just want to make sure that some of the things that she has initiated will continue. And also, wanted to know what he was interested in. So, had a good meeting, and council commission decided to make him the interim director of JFS for now. And there will be a national search for a permanent director. Also, met with some staff people in our building as we look at security on our floor and in the building in general, and just making sure that all needs are met when people come in to see the Commissioners, that they are able to see the Commissioners, and there's no barriers to them, and also that we are also protected in that process. And then every week, our team meets with our administrator, who there are so many issues going on in the county. And so, we meet every week with Jeff to update us on five or six pages of different issues that are going on. So, there's never a dull moment. There are plenty of things to do. And I would encourage all of you to be a part of the Boards and Commissions. There are openings in the Boards and Commissions. If you want to be involved, we've been filling quite a few of them, but there's still some openings. Also, I was part of a webinar for Economic Development Incentives, so we can look at a more creative way of bringing economic incentives into the county and working and partnering with other counties to make sure we can do a better job of economic development. And I was also at the SWOIB. It's Southwest Ohio Regional... It's a Workforce Incentive Board. And so, we... I inducted about nine or 10 new members. And they are fantastic as it relates to training people to get jobs that they maybe at one time were not qualified to be a part of. So, we had that induction and swearing in. And I thank Sherri Marshall for allowing me to do that. In addition, OKI... I attended the OKI meeting, Ohio-Kentucky-Indiana meeting, which is a mass transit meeting where all... It's 116 people on the board. I am one of those there. And we look at mass transit in addition for this whole area, regional area. So, quite interesting. A lot of great things coming through, a lot of grants that are coming through. So, keep your ears and eyes open to see what grants are coming that maybe you guys may qualify for. Let's see what else. In addition, I did attend this week. There was a candidate forum for those that are running for Commissioner and Prosecutor and all those things. The reason why I bring that up is that it's very important that we get involved with who's running. I'm not endorsing anyone, but you need to know where your vote goes and what they stand for. So, I went for the purpose of just hearing more from those candidates and whether or not I should give them my vote. In addition, we met with a stormwater designated, Todd Long, who's looking at stormwater management. You may be hearing more about stormwater and whether or not we can meet the needs of our community. They are looking at... There's never... There's not been a fee increase since 2009. I'm not saying they're going to do that. But they're wondering if they can provide the services they need to do without one. In addition, I had Darrell Harley, who is the head of the Metro. He's now the permanent President of Metro. He was there in our office to talk about just, in general, transportation. And, you know, he couldn't talk about the strategy for levy issue number seven, but he did talk about the great things that are going to happen if that comes about. And then we had a conference call with another gentleman who has a law firm in Wisconsin, who's interested in bond issuance, the fact that Hamilton County has bonds that are issued. And even though he's in Wisconsin, he knows about law groups that are here. This is a minority group who, from his statistics, we're not including very many minorities in that issue, bond issuance process. So, we talked to him and John Boogan, who was very helpful in that meeting. And we'll be talking further about that concern. And Madam President, that would end my report other than consent items that I have some questions about. So, I'll speak up about that when it comes.
Okay, great. Thank you. Commissioner Parks?
I do have one item. I am proud to announce that our Oral Health Coalition, which Commissioner Todd Prutun formed in 2018 in order to address the oral dentistry for our citizens in Hamilton County. Many people cannot afford to go to a dentist, or they don't go, or they make choices that compromise their health. Well, what I am announcing now is that our coalition, which is comprised of professionals and decision-makers from our county, we have been asked to be a part of the Ohio Medicaid Advisory Council. So, what this means is that when they are making decisions pertaining to health and what would be included in Medicare, that our commission will be a part of the decision-making. So, we're really happy and proud about that. That'll be it.
Thank you. That's great. I just have a couple of things. Early vote has started. Piggybacking a little bit on my fellow Commissioners. And as everyone knows, Election Day is St. Patrick's Day this year, so it's easy to remember. So, we want to encourage everyone to engage in the electoral process and vote. And you can go to the Board of Elections as of two days ago. Is that right? Or yesterday? Yesterday. And go vote. Also, the Harrowen Coalition is having its annual report. We do an annual report just to give an update of what has been going on with the Coalition, some of the initiatives, and then a look forward. And so, that annual report will be held at the county building at 10:30 on February 26. We have all the steering committee members with us, and they all report out on the work that's been going on. It's usually pretty informative. And so, you know, everyone is welcome to attend, of course. And then two announcements. Brigid Darty has handed this material out, I believe, to the Vice Mayor. Couple of things going on countywide we've been trying to promote. One is the complete count for the census. So, two things here. One is please respond when approached by a census taker or whether it's through the mail or online. The complete count helps us to bring down federal dollars, the CDBG dollars that we use to partner with North Bend and other jurisdictions in Hamilton County, both of the economic development dollars and the safety net dollars. And if we don't have a complete count, we do not get our fair share of dollars from the federal government. And these are dollars that are going somewhere, defined by population. In the last count, we were in the high 70s for the county, and the city was a little bit worse than that. And so, we're gonna try to do much better this year. So, please, please, answer that census form when you get it. Also, there are some good-paying jobs related to the census, particularly those that go out on the doors in Canvas. You set your own hours. Starts in late spring, around April, May. And you can go in your own neighborhood. And for folks that have not completed the census form, you literally go knock on the door and ask them to fill out the forms. So, there... I think... I know I've said this before, I can't remember ever. How much? $23.50 an hour? And then there's a bit... And she keeps saying 26. This is why I'm confused. I think there's a range between some of the data entry work and then the door knocking. And so, if you're at all interested, we've dropped off cards, and they're in the building. But these are great jobs for students or teachers or folks that are retired or want a second job. Create your own hours. So, I just want to, once again, promote the complete count. The mayor and I and the commission are very involved in trying to support this effort. And then lastly, we've got something that we launched. It's been a little while ago, but not everyone's aware of it. This is the Customer Assistance Program for... Related to MSD, related to your sewer bills. So, if you qualify for the homestead exemption in the state of Ohio, you likely qualify for this. And it's assistance to help you pay for your sewer bills. And so, it's called the CAP program. We worked with the city on this one as well. And so, this brochure has an application in it. You fill out the application, you send it in, and you find out whether or not you're qualified for the assistance. And so, if anyone thinks they might be eligible for this, I would encourage you to fill that out. We've left some in the room. And for those that are watching, please go to our website, and you can find this. It's something that we're very pleased to offer, that assistance. I know it's difficult to pay the bills sometimes while on a fixed income. And so, that's the purpose of the program. So, that does it for me. Administrator Aluto, I believe you have a couple items?
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, so I do have a couple of by-leaves that are in your packet. The first by-leave in your packet is a resolution of intent to fund a collective bargaining agreement between the Hamilton County Sheriff and the benevolent employees of the Hamilton County Sheriff in Wave ORC 4117.14. This is something we do typically when we are preparing to enter into a collective bargaining agreement, especially with a public safety unit that is subject to conciliation. The Ohio Revised Code states that when you... If something does... If an impasse is reached in that negotiation, and it goes to conciliation, that when the conciliator awards something, that the compensation package that is agreed to can't start until the next calendar year after that settlement is reached. So, what Wave 4117 does is allow us... It's really a good faith... A show of good faith with the union that says we're not going to use impasse as an excuse to delay a compensation increase, and that we can agree that if we do go to conciliation, if we do reach impasse, that the compensation increase related to the agreement can go back to when we first hit that impasse or back to the beginning of that year. So, it's really... It's something we do just to make sure that... It's, again, a show of good faith with the union that we would not use an impasse to prevent the moving forward with a compensation increase in the agreement. So... And Frank Spitalas here, if there's any additional questions. He's our HR Director. But the administration recommends approval. Again, these are pretty standard that we do whenever we go into a negotiation agreement with a unit subject to conciliation.
Okay, great. Are there any questions or comments?
No questions.
No questions.
All right, very good. I will move that we approve of the Resolution of Intent to Fund a Collective Bargaining Agreement between the Hamilton County Sheriff and the benevolent employees of the Hamilton County Sheriff in Wave ORC 4117.14-G11.
Second.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summerau-Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes. Thank you, Commissioners. And finally, my final by-leave item is Resolution Number Two in your packet. This is authorizing the county administrator to enter into a $2.5 million project grant agreement by between the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners and the Ohio Department of Rehabilitation and Correction for the Local Jail Capital Project. We discussed this in staff meeting the other day. This allows me to sign an agreement to accept a state capital grant award of $2.5 million for the build-out of 92 additional beds in the Hamilton County Justice Center, primarily for treatment-related purposes, as we discussed in the staff meeting the other day. The administration recommends approval. Also, happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Thank you. Just for the benefit of those in the room, this one is something that we've been working on for a while. We have a jail overcrowding problem, as you may know, in Hamilton County, much like other counties. Some of that related to the opioid epidemic and the increased numbers going into the facility because of the scourge of addiction in Hamilton County. And so, we went to the state and asked for $2.5 million through the capital budget so that we could retrofit a part of the jail as opposed to building a new facility. We're taking the facility that we've got, and we're retrofitting one of the floors to accommodate about 90 beds for treatment for people who have either addiction or mental health issues. And so, we're very proud of this work. This is just... We're accepting the grant through this resolution. So, just to bring everybody in the room up to speed as to what we're doing here. So, are there any comments or questions from the Commissioners?
No questions.
No questions.
Thank you. All right, so I'm going to move, then, that we approve of Resolution Number Two, authorizing the county administrator to enter into a $2.5 million project grant agreement by in between the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners and the Ohio Department of Rehabilitation and Correction for the local jail capital project.
Second?
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Jimenez?
Yes.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. And finally, just a quick comment, so, and I'll base it on this particular byleave. Wherever possible, the administration likes to make sure that we have items that are actually on the agenda. You know, Quirk does a great job publishing the agenda, and we like to get our items on the agenda. Sometimes, it's the nature of what we do. We want to move something forward on an expedited basis. We have a grant that we need, a grant agreement we need to sign off on so that we can begin bidding services for construction. Sometimes, we need to bring items forward on a byleave basis, as we did with this. And what we're going to try to do, what the administration is going to make an effort to do this year, is where that happens, as we did with this, to bring these items forward on staff meeting in advance, especially if they're of a significant dollar value, just from the perspective of transparency and openness. And in that regard, I did want to make the board aware that next week, we're going to be scheduling on staff meeting several items relating to the construction related to the FC Cincinnati Garage in the West End. We have a couple of contracts that we want to expedite to stay on a good construction schedule. One of those relates to auger cast piles. It's the first bid package that we put out for this project. The bids were received today. I can report that we received very favorable bids in relation to our engineers' estimates, so we're off to a good start. We want to keep things on track. Phil Beck, who is our project executive, I've asked him to prepare a presentation for the board on Tuesday so that you would be well-informed on the item moving into the legislative session on Thursday. So, I just wanted to bring that up for the board's information. If there's any questions throughout the week, certainly feel free to reach out to me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for doing that, Jeff.
Madam President, how many bids did we receive?
I think we received three bids today.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. We'll move into the consent agenda. We do have some speakers' cards related to item number eight, and so, I'm going to call these speakers forward. Karen Lapping is the first speaker.
Good evening. Got the pleasure of the floor for two minutes. Okay, I'm here on behalf of the proposal to renew this contract with this foster care placement in upstate New York. This particular foster placement is costing the county about $250,000 a year. That cost is not need to be incurred at all because the county has another viable, permanently operating placement that one of the siblings is already located in, in the state of Pennsylvania. I'm very concerned about the placement of these four children that are in this particular home. They are ages four, eight, 11, and 13, with a sibling that is 17 years old, living with grandparents in Pennsylvania. They are all currently placed by the county, by Hamilton County. Some of my concerns with the placement of the home, I actually have a letter here from Berkshire Family Center, which is the agency, and it says here that the foster family are willing to accept this 17-year-old child who is extremely handicapped, of which all of these children are, and the actual agency has denied them access to having this fifth child at this home. This $250,000 budget is for four children, one family only. This particular family lives in a rural area. It's a round corner from Montreal. That's, it's way up in New York. The foster family, frequently, this winter has had no heat in the house, no central heat. They have space heaters. Again, the children are four, eight, 11, and 13, including their own four children. These four children that I'm talking about, that are foster children, are all severely handicapped. They have no hot running water. The children have to go to the YMCA to be bathed. One of the little boys, the four-year-old, was seriously ill in November. He had to be ambulanced 400 miles to Children's Hospital Philadelphia, where he was admitted for eight days. He was ambulanced in the ambulance at the cost of insurance for eight hours. Adequate care is not being given to these children. I am concerned about not only the cost to the county, but the neglect of the care to the children. There is, like I said, a placement available with the grandparents that has already been approved, that is actually in operation. As we speak, in Pennsylvania, these children are 400 miles apart. They are not entitled to sibling visits, and what is happening to this family is absolutely cruel.
Thank you. I am going to ask the administrator to comment, but I'm going to get through the speakers' cards first, if that's okay?
Sure.
With the Commissioners, is that all right?
Okay.
Okay. Well, do you?
Like, this is serious enough, I think, if we could address it now, unless it's related to all of it.
They're all related.
Oh, they're all related. Okay, I'm sorry.
Did you like me to kind of stand back in case you have questions?
Our next speaker is Matthew Beckerich. Yeah, to be clear, all three speakers' cards are on the same item.
Thank you.
Welcome. You have the pleasure of the floor for two minutes.
All right. I am here to oppose the adoption of Consent Agenda Item Number Eight, Resolution J-02520. This resolution is for the spending of nearly a quarter million dollars on Berkshire Farms Center and Services for Youth for the care of a group of four out of five siblings, spending $350 on administration charges for the supervision every day. Per the Federal Fostering Connections to Success and Increasing Adoption Act that was signed into law in 2008, if all the siblings can be placed into a suitable home together, they should be. Berkshire Farms does not accept all five, but a location in Pennsylvania with the grandparents is suitable to host all the children together and has been approved by both Hamilton County and Pennsylvania. Furthermore, the Act states that, in the case of siblings not placed together, states must make reasonable efforts to provide for frequent visitation. As the sites are 430 miles apart, this has proved to severely limit visitations. These issues would be resolved by housing all five siblings together with their grandparents in Pennsylvania. Adoption of this resolution merely places Hamilton County against this federal law, so, once more, I oppose its adoption.
Thank you. And our last speaker on this item is Kitty Beckerich. Welcome.
I oppose the adoption of Consent Agenda Item Number Eight, Resolution J-02520. The foster parents that the Berkshire Farm contract is for routinely place the children in medical risk. Just before Thanksgiving, the younger boy had to be medically transported to the Intensive Care Unit at Children's Hospital of Philadelphia, 400 miles away, because the foster mother couldn't be troubled to seek medical care when the child's temperature was 105. The child was diagnosed with sepsis and nearly died. But for his mother insisting on the child getting medical care, he would be dead this minute. Thank you, Berkshire Farms. The eight-year-old boy had eczema on his elbow, oozing bleeding. All it required was a prescription, which he already had for a salve. Foster mom couldn't be troubled to fill the prescription, couldn't be troubled to apply the salve. Foster home was without heat and hot running water for three weeks in November, when the temperatures were zero, again without heat in January, and no hot running water. The foster placement is in a home recorded by the county as a two-bedroom home, two-bedroom home, a septic system rated for four people. There are three adults, three children to the family, and the four foster children. That's 10 people in a home with two bedrooms, with a septic system rated for four. It's in the best interest of the children that they immediately be placed with their grandparents in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania.
Thank you.
So, as I see this, Jeff, and correct me if I'm wrong, we've had a couple of different things going on here. One is related to the placement, and one is related to Berkshire Farms, where they're being placed. And so, I want to bifurcate that and say that we are not able to get involved in cases relative to children being placed. However, where we place them, you know, as we contract out, is under the purview of the board. So, if you could kind of address it, especially relative to the item that's in front of us?
Sure. So, in terms of what I can say, so, this obviously is a child welfare case. It's a child welfare case that is also in the court system as well. I believe it's in the appellate, it's on, yeah. I believe it's also in the appellate court system right now. My understanding in talking to the JFS Director and to the county Ombudsman is that the placements on this were a part of the judicial process as well. So, I don't know that there is any authority for the board to change that contractual relationship as it relates to the placements. We can look into it more and find out what sort of discretion the board does have, but that's the understanding I have from talking with our Ombudsman on the process.
So, as far as, then, the contract that's in front of us, what exactly does that mean?
Relating to the contract in front of us, that would mean that that is part of the judicial process, was the placement in that particular setting. So, again, I can, I can look into more what discretion the board may have, but my understanding is that the board does not have the authority to change that location.
Thank you.
But you can vote down the contract.
Thank you. Thank you for the explanation. Questions and comments?
Thank you, Madam President. If I may ask, your relationship with the children, how you came upon all this information that you have about the children?
We are very close, personal friends with the family.
Okay, okay.
It pains us, not only to watch with the children, and it pains us not only to watch with the children, especially the children, but also what parents are going through. It pains me as a taxpayer to see my tax dollars being spent on a placement like this, where there's not ample care, and there's another placement with a family level that's already approved, that already has a placement that would take all five children, already has one, at no cost to the county at all. Why are we spending $250,000 a year for something we don't need?
Thank you. I had, actually, when I mentioned, thank you, Madam President, I had that number eight on my questioning for the consent agenda for, well, a couple reasons. I went through all the information, but it's really hard, it was really hard to find out that it was in New York. So, I'm just asking, I was hoping Maura was here, that when we have placements outside of our area, if it was just an easier way to know that it's New York, it was a placement. And the other question was, why? Now, I'm hearing more about why did we have to go to New York for the placement? So, that was a concern for me. I'll just deal with number eight right now, but hearing the additional information, I heard you say, Jeff, you don't know what our discretion is as it relates to this, whether or not we can do anything if the court decided that this was the best place, it was a judicial decision, but you didn't sound like you were confirmed about it.
My understanding, the information I have, is that there is no authority of the board to change that location, or that placement, or the location.
Well, you were just saying you would look into it.
Please, please don't. Oh, please don't, so I'll speak out.
But you were just saying that you could look into it to make sure.
I can, yes.
And I think it's very important that we make sure, because at this point, Madam President, I would ask that we defer the decision on number eight until we get additional information on this number eight. Okay.
Any questions or comments related to item number eight?
Not at this time, no.
Okay, so, yes.
Just real quick, if I may. The last speaker, you provided a picture. Were you intending that to be part of the public record? I just want you to know, I have a bit of concern, because I don't know what the picture is of, and if it is of a child's injuries...
The picture of the uncutted eczema, his face is not there.
All right, I understand that. We will have to look into that before we enter that in. I just have concerns over entering a picture of a child's injury into the public record. I want you to be aware of that. If that is what you insisted, I mean, you can...
I just wanted them to see it.
Okay, but that's one of my questions, whether you were trying to enter that into the record or not, the official record of the board.
All right. As you can tell, these are very, very sensitive issues when it comes to children in care, and we do not have the authority or the discretion to get ourselves involved as this is working its way through the judicial system. And so, what we can do is hold the item for a week, get further explanation as to the location of the placement. I think that's a legitimate request of those that have more information. But as to some of the other issues raised, it's just a very difficult position to be in, as far as the board goes, but we do not have the discretion or the authority to get involved in some of these placement cases. And so, I just want to offer that, because I'm feeling a little uncomfortable, because it's a very sensitive issue when you're talking about children and families, and the best interest of all. But why don't we, I would be happy to honor the recommendation to hold this for a week if it's not time-sensitive?
I'm not aware it is time-sensitive. I did receive confirmation from the county Ombudsman that nothing can be changed without court approval.
Okay.
But I'm, I'm not aware that it's a time, that it's time-sensitive to the week, so I'm happy to have the board hold this, and we can get back to the board with formal...
Just a further understanding of the kind of, I guess it's the rationale...
Right.
For the placement. Not, I don't know that any of us are suggesting that we can change it, or we want to change it, we just want further information related to item number eight. So, let's hold that item, and then, did you have questions about other items as well?
Just item number 10 is also a placement in Columbus, so it just goes back to what I was saying about if there could be a better way, rather than going through all the paperwork on each item, to know that if it's out of state or out of Hamilton County, that would be great to know.
Sure.
Okay. And if we're gonna, I have another consent item. Number three, it's a resolution to authorize an agreement between the Hamilton County Mental Health and Recovery Services Board and the Board of Hamilton County Commissioners on behalf of Adult Probation Department for reimbursement of mental health services, the last sentence for the Disorder Offender Program. I tried very hard to find out what program, I mean, I looked through all of this, but even if that's the name of the program, it sounds like an antiquated name, and it goes back to when we were saying like people were mentally retarded. We don't say that anymore, they're disabled. So, I was just wondering, and not that I'm not going to approve it, but to take a look at for the Disorder Offender Program. We already know they have mental health issues, but is it legally necessitate that we keep that last sentence on there? I didn't see anything in there as it relates to that.
That's a good question, and I can check on that in terms of what the formal name, we can check with the courts on what the formal name of the program is, just so the board is aware, and I think you probably are, but just for some explanation, this is the annual agreement that we do. We do a couple of these, we're doing with the sheriff's office, we're doing with adult probation, where we have entities in the criminal justice system that are in such a place that they wind up having to provide mental health services to the populations that come through their operations, and this is a reimbursement from the Mental Health Recovery Services Board and the Mental Health Levy to offset general fund expenditures as it relates to that. But I can get some clarification on the actual name of the program, and whether it can be modified, altered, et cetera.
Yeah, there's obviously a reason for it, because the last sentence that says mental health services, to me, would be enough, but they added it on for a reason, so I just would like to know what that is.
Right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's all I have.
Any questions or comments?
Thank you.
Okay, so, given our conversation, then, I am going to move that we approve of items one through seven, and items nine and 10, and hold item number eight for one week.
Second?
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Jimenez?
Yes.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. We have nothing else on our agenda. Is there anything else for the good of the cause?
I have nothing.
Okay, no.
Once again, thank you to the Village of North Bend, and for all of you coming out, we are very grateful for your hospitality. Thank you, and we're...
Thank you.
I'll move that we adjourn.
Second?
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Jimenez?
Yes.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Thank you.